The chairman guy said he was trying to keep us scheduled.
We'll go ahead and call the committee meeting to order. Okay, it is 7:30, so we're gonna call the committee of the whole meeting to order on Tuesday, March 13th. On the agenda is roll call, please.
Brusato?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Star? Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serrano?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next item is item two, which is the approval of the minutes for February 13th and February 27th of 2018. And those would be for the minutes for the committee of the whole. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Uwer, second by Serrano, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's can read. Okay, item three, which is items removed, added, or changed. Laura, do we have any?
No.
Okay, we do have the executive session coming up then?
Yes.
Okay. All right, item four, which is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. So if anybody is here that would like to address us for an item that is not on the agenda, please come up to the podium and give us your name.
Hello, I'm Duke Wall, 811 Manchester, Batavia, Illinois. It's been about a year and a half since I've been up here to talk to anybody, and I've been blissfully putting together a model railroad for about a year and a half. And suddenly, there was a disturbance in the force. I felt a feeling that I haven't felt in a long time, maybe. I was told that there was a town hall meeting about to come, and of course, I started trying to play catch-up and looking at the Chronicle and found the YouTube video, the city discussions last week about school violence and other issues dealing with the Second Amendment. And while I'm not here for discussion, I'm not here for debate, I am here to ask for one thing. If you're going to be making discussions like this, I would like to know about it. I'd like a more broader notification system so that the other people in Batavia would have a chance to come up and respond. I mean, it caught me by surprise, and it's about five or six other people as well. So if you could all consider that, please, I'd appreciate it very much. Thank you for your time.
Well, certainly, and I'll just make comment on that, maybe somebody else would like to also, but appreciate your comment, number one. But secondly, it wasn't a planned conversation. It's one of those things that, as we have these meetings and under others, any alderman could bring up anything they would like to. So it was brought up, and the conversation just kinda started going around the room, and...
I saw the YouTube video.
So... But I appreciate your comments.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much, and Laura?
Mr. Wall, I also wanted to let you know that that wasn't the only public conversation that will be held on the matter. As a result of the discussion that was held that evening, there will be one or more community discussions that are held on that topic, and those will be broadly advertised for anybody's participation.
That's great. I figured that perhaps maybe Chris Low would be making more announcements, but I've recently read that he's canceled that and is now going to establish a committee of some sort.
Just planning the discussions.
Right, okay, so I'm coming up to speed, but I felt like I was left behind. As I was watching the video, I sorta felt like I was an outsider. I had no way of knowing, and I wanted to be here to listen to the discussions, and I wanted to perhaps maybe join in and make my comments known.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks.
Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna move on then to item number five, which is a presentation from volunteer organizations. And Mayor Shelkey, I believe you're gonna take it from here?
Yes, thank you. Let me just preface this by saying that Batavia has some very unique and very special and very wondrous things going on within our community that are basically being driven at no cost to the taxpayer, so to speak. A lot of this is all being done by donations and public volunteerism in support of the community, where it's from the heart and it's all good, well-intentioned stuff. Some of this begins, two of the things that we're gonna hear briefly about tonight, the Access Toy Drive and the Fourth of July fireworks program originated back in 1950, when they were both started by members of the Batavia Fire Department. And here we are 68 years later, and both of them are still very much some of the pride and joy of this community and its livelihood. So we've got some history we're gonna talk about here tonight, but what we wanna do is, we've got representatives in the room from all these various good things that are happening, and we've asked that they come up and do like five, six, seven-minute presentation about themselves. It's all being broadcast on TV, and we're gonna be replaying this tape several times before various groups and letting other people know, and certainly because we have 13 of the elected members of the City Council here, hopefully in your wards, if people ask you how they can get involved or volunteer to do stuff, this will give you some background to know who these people are and what they're doing and the good work that they're doing on behalf of the citizens of Batavia. So that's just simply the idea here. We're not here to do anything. We've got some sheets over here on the table. If anybody here tonight wants to volunteer for anything, they can fill out one of the sheets and just drop it either off before they leave, or bring it back tomorrow and leave with the receptionist, or send us, fax it and send it back to us, however they wanna do it. But we do have some information sheets where people can sign up for anything they'd like to do. But we are very, very blessed. I was to some meetings the last week. I've been in the region in my other roles doing some stuff, and several other mayors in their area have asked me, "How, what's Batavia's secret? How do you generate so much goodwill and good efforts and volunteer support, and how do you mobilize this?" And I said, "Well, it's, sometimes it's a struggle, and right now, we're out here trying to, you know, search the weeds of the town and see if we can flush out some more people that wanna step forward and help us out, like on Fourth of July and Toy Drive and all the other good stuff." But I've had a couple mayors now tell me they're gonna come and visit us and have me show them kinda what's going on, like places like the food pantry and the Toy Drive idea and whatever, because there's a lot of cities that are looking at this as kind of a model or role to follow and see if they can bring similar types of activities into life in their own town. So this is a very special moment for Batavia because I think it fully illustrates what the fiber and the quality of this town is really all about, and it's something that I think each and every one of us on the council should be very proud of, that we've got activities like this going on in our town. So to kick this off, I've got Mr. Dubus and Mr. Bailey here from the Toy Drive, and I'd like to invite you gentlemen, if you'd come up and tell us a little bit about the Access
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council, and good evening, Batavia. The mayor talked a little bit about 68 years of this program being in place in Batavia, and other communities trying to do the same thing that happens here in Batavia. It's gonna be a little stretch out there, other communities, because I'm gonna tell you that there's no other town in the state of Illinois that can do the things that the Batavia community does. Never have I stood before the council or stood before the Batavia community and asked them for a favor that somehow, some way, they took care of it. So first of all, I need to thank the community of Batavia for being a part of this program for 68 years. This year was a trying time for us of running almost 600 children through the program, close to 300 families that we took care of here in Batavia. We didn't take care of them. Rudy and his wife and my family didn't take care of those folks. Batavia, you took care of those people. The thanks should come to the Batavia community for taking care of those families that make sure they had a Merry Christmas. Yes, today Rudy and I are both standing in front of you and saying, "We need your But the real problem that we arise to on a day-to-day basis is 27 days from October till middle of December, when we have the Toy Drive, is when all this stuff takes place. And you're going, "How do you do that?" Well, both of our families get together, and all year, we're putting toys together from donations and storing them, because really, I don't know how many seven- to eight-year-old boys, 10-year-old to 13-year-old girls, or how many teens we're gonna have. So we're always collecting throughout the whole year with the numbers escalating every year. So we're actually putting toys away in a hidden place. And you're gonna say, "A hidden place? What are you talking about?" We have no place to go. Batavia, we have no place to go. Laura, last year, went and got us the old Walgreen building. I can tell you over the 68 years that my family has been a part of this. We have been in 27 different places here in Batavia to have the Toy Drive. 27 different places we have run the Toy Drive. One year, I came here and I probably set a lot of people on fire and told them that I don't have a place to have the Toy Drive. So you know where I'm gonna have it at? In my front yard. If it snows, I don't care, but I'm gonna have the Toy Drive. Community of Batavia, Council, over the next eight, nine months, let's try to put our heads together and think about, if this really is a great program, can we have a home somewhere? Right now, all of these toys that were left over from last year are in a hidden place. They're in a hidden place. The Fire Department, thanks, Chief, for putting masks on all of the firemen and taking the toys out of the place over here at Walgreens and taking it to the hidden place. Ladies and gentlemen of Batavia, I really need your help at this point in time, that we can really show our community that we have a place that we can call home in not 27 or 28 different locations that we have run these Toy Drives. Again, if we don't have a place next year, we will have a place. It will be in my front yard. I welcome anybody that would like to join the committee. Again, there's not a lot of work that we do, or you would do, in support of it at this point in time. October 15th is when we start putting stuff together. If we had a home that we were actually putting toys out, I could cut the time down, you know? It's a race. I can tell you that from October 15th until Christmas Day, we were actually giving toys away. The families that showed up on the Toy Drive day went relatively smooth. I can tell you that 52 families did not show up on that Toy Drive day. But you know what? Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday night, they came and got their toys. Because how do you tell a person that they can't come on Sunday, but I gotta work, or my family's got sickness in it, and I'm gonna miss the Toy Drive? Never happens. We always make sure that, we always open up three, four days afterwards for those people to come in and make sure that they're gonna get toys for their children. I can tell you that we had many families this year that's never happened before, Christmas Day, that called and says, "Mr. Bailey, we don't have a Christmas today, but thank you. Next year, I'll definitely get my name on it." You know what my wife says? "We'll meet you at the front door." Everybody got a Christmas here in Batavia. I'll open it up for questions that I can answer for you. Otherwise, sign up. Batavia, I need a home. And get out of the hidden spot.
So Roy, I guess, since we are on TV, if someone is interested or has an idea for you, how would they get ahold of you?
Send it right to the city here. I'm actually traveling a lot now with my job. My main elf out there, my wife, went through surgery last week, and without her help and my daughter's help and Rudy and his wife, I mean, I don't know how we could do it. I don't, I think if we could have something sent to the city, you know, I think we'd be more apt to. Have you look at it, and then we, in turn, will, you know, step up and make some decisions with it also.
Okay. Scott?
Roy, how much space do you think you might need?
Yeah, somebody just asked me that a few minutes ago. The building over there, the jewel, is 9,000 square feet.
Yeah.
And you're gonna go, "You need 9,000 square feet? If you looked at the pictures or visited, inch to inch, to put 300 people, 300 families through that facility, you need about 9,000, you know? If somebody offered me 7,000, somebody offered me 5,000, I'm gonna take what I get.
Anyone else?
Anybody else?
Thank you.
You good?
I'm good.
Well, the next one we're gonna have, we're gonna do a combination here of item B, which is the Flag Day Celebration and the Community Band. And those are two, again, volunteer-based organizations. And the representative that's gonna speak is Linda Shelkey.
I recognize the name.
What?
He only does it so it's pronounced right.
Oh, this lady in the front row.
I don't have to pronounce that one for you?
This lady in the front row is telling me that we, she wants to go after the fireworks. Mr. Davis? As many of you may recognize, Mark here is also the captain of our ESDA, I think you're the captain, isn't it? Captain of our ESDA crew, and they do a great job. But he's also chairman of the fireworks committee, so he's gonna tell us a little bit about that.
Well, first, I'm gonna blow Roy's secret. The secret place is the North Pole, Roy. Why don't you just call it what it is? It's the North Pole. Okay, so I have a little presentation for the fireworks. For over 60 years, like the mayor said, every summer, there's a magical tradition that occurs in our hometown. On a warm midsummer evening filled with festivities and friends, music flows through the streets as children play with their glow of dark necklaces and blinky rings. Blankets and chairs stand guard, staking claim of the protected best spots. Families catch up with their neighbors, and laughter rings through the crowds of people. Fireflies dance and the sun starts to set behind the Musart fields. The songs of our nation signal that the time has finally arrived. And then, the first pop echoes through the fields. The music perfectly syncs to the stunning show in the sky. You sitting off, feeling like a kid all over again, wondering how they manage to do this outdo the previous year's show every time. And here's the reason why. It's because of you. Those fireworks during the sky are because of people like you. That yard sale you had during the citywide garage sale weekend, the coins you dropped into fireworks buckets all over town, the ice cream you and your family enjoyed at our Ice Cream Social, the people of Batavia pay for our fireworks show every year, our local businesses donate to the fund, our residents come together to host fundraisers throughout the year. A committee of volunteers meet every few weeks, leading up to the event to make sure the show goes on perfectly. This time on our tradition exists because we love our hometown. Believe it or not, I've done this now, I've been chairman now, it's gone my ninth year, which it seems like it just, yesterday, I started doing this. And I wanna thank Roger Bright for letting me, pretty much, con me into this job. So if Roger's out there watching, I'll remember this. So basically, how can everybody help? Well, as I said before, we have a garage sale every year, which is our biggest fundraiser, which is, this year's gonna be May 4th and 5th. And what we do is, we invite all Batavia residents to have a garage sale. And it costs you a donation every year. That money is then used for putting on the fireworks. We also have a couple giveaways this year, if I'm not mistaken, we have, is it an Echo or? Oh, the homes. It's like an Echo for the two of the, two people who are gonna draw those for our home. Also, we have the Ice Cream Social, which is the 10th. We're doing it a little bit different this year, we started it later in the evening. Last year, it was about 100 degrees when we did it last year, so we're gonna start a little bit later, like more like 3:30, 4 o'clock, and continue into the evening. So hopefully, people can attend that fine event. And that's gonna be also coordinated with Flag Day, so that'll be, they'll be talking about that after I'm done here. Let's see, what else? We also need volunteers for the day of the event. That is probably the hardest day of anything to do. We also, we charge donations for parking lots. We need people to help with the parking lots, we need people to help with taking donations on the field. I am running around like a chicken with my head cut off all day. We also need people to help coordinate, we have food trucks for our food service. It's a very simple job, just coordinate the food trucks, they come in, they set up, they don't even have to worry about health code license, they have their own licenses, we just hook them up to electricity, and they're ready to go. So if you, anyone wants to volunteer and help with us, we also have a committee that meets. We don't meet every other week, we meet maybe once a month from December till July and then August, we have a follow-up meeting, so we have a couple months off. We don't, we're not necessarily looking for everybody for the committee, if that's not what you wanna do, or if you just wanna help out, like the Ice Cream Social, or the day of the fireworks, or help with the garage sale, we'll definitely take, or you wanna be the person that coordinates the food trucks on your spare time, we'll take anybody. If anybody wants to sign up, we have an email address, it's info@bataviafireworks.org, so you can send, drop us an email. That's, that goes to me and to a couple other peoples on the, people on the committee, and that's pretty much it. Oh, the most important thing is, and Mayor's gonna correct me when we got up here, that no, no tax dollars go to this fireworks show. It's all fully funded by the fireworks fund, that is all donations from corporations, people of Batavia. The only thing the city provides is fire and police protection. They got that right? Okay. And that's it. Any questions?
Any questions, anybody? Thanks.
Okay, the next we're going to have a presentation on Flag Day slash Community Band by the lady in the front row.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also serve on the fireworks committee with Mark, and I can't think of many opportunities in town where you can make something exciting for everybody in the community. Being in the fireworks committee is a very fulfilling role, and probably people, because there's 10 to 15,000 that come to this show every year, takes 35,000 to 40,000, put it on every year, people would be amazed that the work is done by about 10 to 12 people every year, and a lot, a lot of wonderful folks that donate. So again, if people have a little bit of time, this is a fun committee. As Mark mentioned, it doesn't go on that many months during the year, but it's truly one of those opportunities where you can make everybody in town happy and make memories that last a lifetime on the Fourth of July. So we welcome everyone that would like to help with that. And in coordination with that, Mark had mentioned the June 10th Ice Cream Social. The fireworks has now done this for the last few years as one of our big fundraisers, the garage sale and the Ice Cream Social are basically our two events of the year to make funds. And a few years ago, we put together a Flag Day Committee, which has also been helping in tandem with the fireworks committee to do the Ice Cream Social. And we chose, as a fireworks committee, when we started this a few years ago, we chose the Sunday closest to Flag Day, which is June 14th, to host this fundraiser, for the main reason that we are the proud community, where Dr. Bernard Segrand, who actually started Flag Day, thanks to a lot of pressure on President Woodrow Wilson back in the early 1900s, that we should have a commemorative day for the American flag, and because Dr. Segrand had pretty much championed that whole cause his whole life, and he was a dentist here in Batavia for decades, we like to think of him as the father of Flag Day, and we like to think of Batavia as Flag Day City, USA. So we have this Ice Cream Social right as close as we can to Flag Day, and so it's June 10th this year. And the Flag Day Committee has been sort of a parallel group to the fireworks group, which basically works a lot to try to foster everything red, white, and blue in town. So last year, we started a business and home decorating campaign, we called it Paint Batavia Red, White, and Blue. And I'm gonna continue that again this year. But lots of different types of things that we do to try to foster community involvement and pride of Flag Day. So that goes hand-in-hand with the fireworks fundraiser. And so again, we are not specifically asking for members to join the Flag Day Committee right now, but what will happen at this Ice Cream Social this year on June 10th is we're going to be talking about a grand plan to build a Flag Day Monument, which will be very close to City Hall here. And once that is announced, there'll be lots of opportunities for the community to get involved and help with fundraising and fundraising for that. Right now, if there is anybody in the community that has accounting skills, fundraising skills, or event planning skills, we'd love to hear from you as we prepare for what will happen after the rollout of the monument plan happens on June 6th. So hopefully, there might be some interest that people would have in all of that. But again, Batavia's always been a very patriotic community, we're so proud of that, and we have been so proud of Dr. Segrand forever and ever, and now we are finally gonna get an opportunity to honor him with this Flag Day Monument. And again, kinda help to tie together, through many separate efforts, we're gonna bring them all together and foster the Flag Day, the fireworks. June 14th, July 4th, all of these things will come together as we build this monument together as a community, kinda like we did the Riverwalk. So anyway, if you have any questions on that, you can ask those now. If not, I'm gonna switch hats. I'm also the manager of the Batavia Community Band. And we started this back in the fall of 2013, so we're starting our fifth year now. We're under the direction of Mr. John Heath, who's the retired band director of Batavia High School. We are a wonderful group of musicians, but most of all, we just have a ton of fun. And we play for all the patriotic events in town. We are, I'm speaking to this tonight because we're under the umbrella of the city, since we play for city events. So some of the things that we cover, basically, our first event is always Loyalty Day, Memorial Day, Flag Day, Fourth of July, Oktoberfest, Veterans Day, and the Celebration of Lights, which kicks off the holidays here, and Sunday night after Thanksgiving. So as you listen to that lineup, you're saying, "Oh, lots of patriotic music." And yes, we do, and of course, the Christmas songs and a little few pokers thrown in for Oktoberfest. But last year, we started a concert also on the Riverwalk in September, which we'll do again this year, so that we could play some other kinds of music, which kind of helps give a nice variety to all the band members, too. So anyway, we're always looking for a good additional instrumentalist. All you have to do is bring your instrument and a stand. We practice on Monday evenings here in the council chambers. Depending on the city council schedule, it's either 5:30 to 7:00 or 7:00 to 9:00. Sometimes it's an occasional Tuesday. But basically, our high season starts, we'll be getting back together the first Monday night in April, and we basically go from April through the end of November is kind of our entire calendar. So we have about three dozen players that get together, and if you have a little rust on you or on your instrument, not to worry. A lot of people that have come together to play haven't played in years. It had been decades for me that I hadn't played my drums, so that's why Mr. Heath and I decided this was a needed opportunity in town to give a lot of wonderful band members who'd loved band forever, a chance to check another thing off their bucket list and get back together and play with a really good band. So anyway, if you are interested in that at all, I'd appreciate it if people could write that down on their sheet. If you do, just put down what instrument you play. And if anybody who might hear this in the future, my email is bataviacommunityband@gmail.com. One other thing I wanna mention, too, and the Neighbor's Magazine just came out for March and April, there was a request in there for our June 6th Ice Cream Social, for any student performance groups that might wanna perform for the Ice Cream Social, to also email me at bataviacommunityband@gmail.com, and let me know if you'd like to have your group perform on that Sunday afternoon, evening of June 10th. So whether it's musical groups, cheer groups, robotics groups, whatever sort of thing, it's a wonderful opportunity to let the kids sort of show what they know, and it's a great afternoon to get together and, again, celebrate Flag Day and help raise some worthy funds for the Fourth of July, as well as our future Flag Day Monument. Any questions? Mighty?
I think for the lady from the front row, who I see at all the meetings. The address for the webpage is flagdaymonument.com, and there's an Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook account for Flag Day Monument. That's going to have all the information and the drawings as they are progressing.
Yes, and our three websites... Yes, and our, our three websites, it's bataviafireworks.org, bataviaflagday.com, or the website that Marty just gave, so that pretty much encompasses all the red, white, and blue activities going on in town. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, the next one, we are very fortunate in Batavia that we have what I guess I would describe as the dynamic duo of helping us recognize the values of our community and promote ourselves, and when I say the dynamic duo, I'm talking about the Batavia Chamber of Commerce and the Batavia Main Street Program, and they're both back there, and do you want to come up together, or do you want to?
Sure.
And they're both going to tell us a little bit about themselves and the great volunteer opportunities that they can provide.
Yes. You want to start?
Sure. For it.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name is Holly Deitchman, I am the president and CEO of the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to share with you a little bit of what we do at the Batavia Chamber. We don't necessarily use volunteers, but we are a great resource for those after today and throughout the year. Our database of members in the chamber consists of about 10% nonprofits and service organizations, so if you would like to follow up with any of these organizations that are presenting this evening, please take a look at our website, bataviachamber.org, you can just search in the business directory for nonprofits or service organizations, everything from Lions, Moose, Rotary, and all of the nonprofits that are speaking this evening are all members of the chamber, and you can find their information within that database. So I encourage you to use us as a resource, just to find out more information on the great services that are provided by many nonprofits in our community, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'll pass it off to the other Wonder Twin Power, this is Jamie Sam, the executive director of Main Street, also known as my better half.
Thank you, Holly. All right, I've got some fun stuff, because nobody's brought up props, and I've got props. So. So we are a member of the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, and we're a nonprofit, and we host a total of 68 events throughout the year in downtown Batavia. Batavia Main Street is a nonprofit organization focused on bringing life and bringing our community into downtown to utilize the area, make downtown the heart of Batavia, and patronize the businesses and organizations that we have down here in our community. We do that, it's myself and my assistant Kathy McNally, we're the only staff, everybody else is volunteers, we utilize about 2,000 to 3,000 volunteers every year, we do double than that in volunteer hours every year. So if you want to do something that makes an impact in our community throughout the entire year, obviously, we've got amazing things that happen on an annual basis with the fireworks and Batavia Access Toy Drive, but we've got opportunities all year long, so if you're ever bored, we're a great organization to call. I'll show you this multiple times, since we're on TV, downtownbatavia.com, our phone number is 630-761-3528, you can also email us at info@downtownbatavia.com, you can find us on Facebook, you can find us on Instagram, on Snapchat, on Twitter, on all the different things. As a volunteer, you get some fun benefits. So we have cool t-shirts to make sure that everyone knows that you are a volunteer of Batavia. Some of our events, like Well Batavia, and some of the lovely ladies on the Well Batavia Committee are in the audience, I don't have any of those shirts today, Downtown Batavia Volunteer, you can wear them even when you're not volunteering to show that you love Batavia. I've got other options, like this one, so you can get another shirt, we've got hoodies and all different things, we like to take care of our volunteers, so we do free t-shirts with a lot of the events, we also do free tickets to our events, so if you enjoy cocktails in the park, you can sign up for a volunteer shift and get your ticket for free, and get to enjoy the rest of the event for free. We always need help cleaning up, setting up, all of that, those are day of volunteers. We also need people who are willing to commit a little bit more time and join our committees. So right now, our committee for the Egg Hop has been meeting, we've got the Egg Hop coming up on March 31st, that committee puts together the schedule, the different dance groups that are coming, coming down, the businesses around town who will be passing out eggs, helping to come up with new ideas for those events, just, you know, facilitating and reaching out to other volunteers to get them for day of volunteers, so you commit a little bit more time depending on the events. We have Oktoberfest, Bat Fest, cocktails in the park, here, I brought that, so that I don't forget any, Second Fridays in downtown Batavia and the Artisan Collective, so if you're more into the arts, we have opportunities for those. We have the farmer's market, I might have already said that, Batavia Dinner Table, which is our 200-person farm-to-table dinner that we host in August, that takes a pretty big committee of dedicated volunteers, working with the farmers, working with the restaurants. With Oktoberfest, we have a big committee of downtown business owners, but we also look for people, we added Sunday this year, so that is our family day, so we're looking for more people to join that committee, that, the people on that committee really get to dictate what that day looks like. So if you are a mom or a dad of young kids who knows the, you know, hip and happening kid performers, and you want to reach out and see if we can get them to be our stage entertainment for that Sunday, join the committee. We want your opinions, we want your thoughts, because we can all come up with all of that. We also need people for our Christmas Collective and Small Business Saturday, our block party event, so all different events that really cover the gamut of all of your hobbies and tastes and different things that you might like. So, yeah, we have different committees, if you want to reach out about that. We also have our Race to Market Committee, which is starting to meet now, too, so if you're really into running, or if you think you like running but don't want to run and would like to help plan a race, we need you for that, too, so reach out to us for that, that's on June 2nd. We, here's the farmer's market poster, just so you guys have something else to look at. We also then, on the next level, the even higher level, past the committees, is our board members. So our board is built up of 12 dedicated volunteers, some city staff members, some business owners, you know, downtown business owners, some Batavia business owners, some residents, so it's a good mix. So if you're willing and wanting to get involved on an even bigger level, meet monthly, to really plan and dig into what you want to see downtown Batavia and Batavia Main Street focusing on, there's an opportunity there. We like to see those people who want to step up to the opportunity come and volunteer at a lower level first, and really get to know the organization and the people involved. But we've got lots of levels for everybody who's interested in volunteering. So, yeah, we couldn't do it without the volunteers in this community, we get volunteers from other communities, too, for certain events that want to come in because they just love spending time in Batavia, because it really is the best. So again, if you're interested in volunteering with Batavia Main Street, downtownbatavia.com, 630-761-3528, when you go to downtownbatavia.com, there is a button that says, "Sign up to", I think it's, "Join in your community" or "Get involved in downtown," you'll see it, there's people, a photo of people with, wearing volunteer t-shirts, click on that, and it will sign you up for our volunteer signup that goes out every time we have an opportunity. I appreciate all the people that email me and tell me that they can't do it, when a date conflicts with something that they have, but really, I just want you to email me when you can, so. Thank you, guys, for listening, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. The curse to me, as I sit here and listen to all this great stuff, that one common theme I think we need to illustrate is the thread that exists between all these organizations and the city and the city government, and while, you know, we can't obviously get behind all these folks and, you know, support them financially to the utmost, I think we, as a city, try to do our very best to help them with facilities and logistical support and moving stuff and all this kind of good stuff, and without the volunteers, though, this would be a very difficult story to present. But we do have a couple more that I'd also like to invite up, and the next one is the Batavia Food Pantry and Clothes Closet, which, again, has been kind of a work in progress for a number of years, and they've moved around the town a little bit, and this certainly started out as kind of a collaboration between the church community and the city government, and is greatly involved into, now I would describe it as a very wondrous and strong institution within our town, in which we proudly can say that we do our very best to try to help those in need as far as putting groceries on the, on the table and making life a little bit easier for some people who seriously need the help. And we do this only after a lot of consideration and who it is we're dealing with and working with, and I'm very proud of this organization, so do we have somebody here from the food pantry?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Shulkey, and those were some really nice things that you said about the food pantry. My name is Eileen Pacero, I'm actually pretty new to the food pantry, I've been volunteering there myself for about a year with, along with my daughter, who's 14, my son actually started volunteering there, he's 18 now, and he volunteered there for three years, and actually, now, when my mother moved to the area, I got her involved volunteering, she's now a regular volunteer, so we sort of run the whole gamut of volunteers that we have at the food pantry. So the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry and Clothes Closet has been helping families in our community since 1981. We serve the people of Batavia and Batavia Township, who are going through a period of time where they might need additional help, and we provide food and clothing for them during that time. Over the course of a year, we serve approximately 750 families, each month, we serve about 320 families, so there are quite a few families in our community that we do help. It takes 150 volunteers every single month for us to be able to provide this service for our community, and our volunteers, like I said, range in age from really young to 80-plus, and we have need for all skill levels, you don't need to have any kind of background to come in, absolutely everyone is welcome. So we have three sort of main categories of volunteers at the food pantry and clothes closet. The first are our client support volunteers, and these are the people who are there during the times when we are open to clients, and so they will assist clients as they're going through making their selections, and they might help carry their groceries out to their car, and really, they're there to just provide a welcoming environment for people who are there utilizing our services. The second need we have is called donation processing and stocking, so we receive donations not only from our local churches, and not only from individual donations, but also all of the grocery stores in the area provide us with a lot of donations almost every single day of the week. So that's Jewel, Target, Walmart, Trader Joe's, Fresh Market, I'm probably forgetting one, I apologize to whoever I'm forgetting, oh, Aldi. So when all of these donations come in, we need people who are there, this is during times when we're not open to our clients, so we need people there who are processing all of those donations as they come in, and they're either putting them on the shelves, or they're putting them into storage for future distribution to our clients. And then our third sort of category of volunteers is special events volunteers, so our next special event that we have coming up is April 14th and 15th, and those are our food sharing days, and this is where we post greeters outside of all of the local grocery stores, and we just ask people who are going into shop to pick up an extra item or two for the food pantry. So we need people who would act as greeters, but we also need people back at the pantry so that as the van goes around and picks up all of those donations, we can get them processed and sorted and put where they need to go. So if you're asking yourself how you can help, I say, come once, come often, or come regularly. Every volunteer is valued for any amount of time that you can offer. Again, we have some people who come regularly every single week, they want to sign up for the same time, they like to volunteer with the same people, they like that sense of community, we have some people who are like, "Eh, I had a few extra hours on a Thursday night, can I come in and volunteer?" Yes. How do you do that? You can sign up online, and it is shown up there on the screen, so batiafoodpantry.org is where you can sign up online. Tuesday through Friday mornings is when we need the people for those processing times, Wednesday and Thursday evenings is when we have our client shopping times. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
And lastly, we also have another organization that has, I guess I would suggest it had its start with the city government, and that's BATV, when the negotiations were underway to bring cable TV into Batavia in the very first, the idea that we have a public TV station was put forth here, and I later find, and having been in this office a long time, that a lot of other towns don't have this opportunity that we've made in Batavia, and I just think of all the video that's been made over the years on historic events and things that have happened, and people who have spoke who are no longer with us, there's a lot of great library resource here now of stuff that's been created by BATV, and they have been a real stalwart partner with us in portraying and presenting and recording the life of this community, for nothing else, for future generations to enjoy and understand, not, much less, all the public information that they've disseminated and shared with the community about events that are taking place and people showing up, so. Could you guys come forward?
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. So I'm Jen Brenz, I'm the director of operations, and this is Andrew Van Meter, and he is the program coordinator, and we are the staff. So we do create a lot of awesome things, and we also need volunteers to help, and in video fashion, I made a video. And I got one of our high school volunteers to help us with it, which is super fun. So here's our YouTube page, if anybody would like to go, and...
Anthony, what happened?
Is there supposed to be like a microphone?
We were here, and we tested all of this.
It worked.
And it worked.
I heard it upstairs.
You could hear it, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, no.
It's good.
Same, everything? Yeah, let's see. I mean, I can hear it, you guys can't.
I can hear it.
Can we put the microphone by it? Oh, sure, let's unclip that microphone, put that by it. I used to be an audio engineer, so.
I heard it here just a minute ago.
Hey, click play.
BATV is community television designed for your use and enjoyment. We would like to know how we can help you, please send an email to info@myBATV.com or call 630-937-5413. Come to BATV to learn anything and everything. Use our community equipment to make videos for other nonprofits in town, or create your own show. Learn anything and everything we have to offer, how to use a video camera, how to work with different ways to record audio, how to edit using Adobe Premiere, how to edit using Adobe Audition, and how to use a green screen, so you can learn how to chroma key your own Learn how to use PTZ cameras for live meetings at City Hall, learn how BATV does live sporting events, learn how to become a video switcher for multi-camera shoots, and become on-air talent at BATV. Come to BATV and work with a specific topic you like, sports, music and arts, community events, BATV original programming, create your own and government meetings. BATV covers live football and homeboys basketball games, we record girls volleyball and basketball, wrestling, baseball, and softball games. BATV tries to cover as many varsity sports at Batavia High School as we can. Want to add a sport? Talk to BATV staff about how you can do this. BATV covers Batavia High School music concerts, Batavia Park District dance recitals, Batavia High School's Rock the Runway, Batavia High School's Improv Troop, but seriously, folks, River Rap City Concert, Wire Street Studios, and Bulldogs Unleashed. Batavia is an awesome community, and there are so many amazing events, if you are a volunteer... how to use PTZ cameras for live meetings at City Hall, learn how BATV does live sporting events, learn how to become a video switcher for multi-camera shoots, and become on-air talent at BATV. Come to BATV and work with a specific topic you like. Sports, music and arts, community events, BATV original programming, create your own and government meetings. BATV covers live football and homeboys basketball games. We record girls volleyball and basketball, wrestling, baseball, and softball games. BATV tries to cover as many varsity sports at Batavia High School as we can. Want to add a sport? Talk to BATV staff about how you can do this. BATV covers Batavia High School music concerts, Batavia Park District dance recitals, Batavia High School's Rock the Runway, Batavia High School's Improv Troop, but seriously folks, River Rap City Concert, Wire Street Studios, and Bulldog's Unleashed. Batavia is an awesome community, and there are so many amazing events. If you are a volunteer with other nonprofits in Batavia, you can also volunteer at BATV and make shows of their community events or PSAs. BATV has many original programs such as Viewpoint, a hot topic roundtable, Live, Laugh, Drink, which covers local breweries, cideries, and distilleries, It's News to Me, a Batavia local news show, Batavia Spotlight, an informative show about local nonprofits and businesses, and After the Bell, a Batavia High School student-produced TV show about things that happen after the school bell rings. Have you always wanted to create a video or TV show? Come to BATV and tell us your idea so we can help. BATV facilities, equipment, and programming slots are available at no cost to any certified individual. Become a certified producer by contacting BATV for a training session. We cover live city council meetings, live committee of a whole, Kane County Government, Kane County Forest Preserve, Batavia Township, Batavia Park District, Batavia Public Schools, and Batavia Public Library. To be a volunteer at BATV, all you need to know is that you want to learn. We will teach you the rest. For more information, visit our website at www.myBATV.com, email us at info@myBATV.com, or give us a call at (630) 937-5413.
Oh, I'm too old.
So if anybody has any questions or anything, we can answer those, and we'll leave this on, ooh, now we're gonna watch a meeting. And you guys can call us. We're located in the high school, so if you have a high school student that is interested, just have them come find us in the high school. We need people to help us with football. We'd love to add more sports, but we need commentators. We don't just have wind and people throwing things. That doesn't make sense. So just let us know if anyone wants to add anything. We used to have lacrosse, and we lost our commentators because most of our volunteers are high school students, and they graduate and they leave. So we'd like to have longer-lasting people. All right.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Cool.
Well, in summary, that's the volunteer team that we have serving this community, and I'm very proud of it. I think it speaks wonders. As I say, many other cities are now calling us and saying, you know, how do you get all this organized, and, you know, you don't have this all riding on the backs of the taxpayers, but you're out there providing the service, and you have to, I guess, figure out the secret of how to touch the heart and the imagination of your community and get the contributions flowing in, which we seem to have the magic touch, and that's what really makes, I think, Batavia, Illinois a special place for us all to live and proudly call our homes. With that being said, one last thing I would just mention is, is that one other great cause we have in town is the Batavia Historical Society, and the Park District are trying to add an addition onto the Depot Museum over here on the other side of the pond. This coming Saturday night, the Batavia Women's Club, who has been a stalwart at supporting a wide variety of good causes for over 100 years in the history of our town here, is stepping forward, and they're going to sponsor a St. Patrick's Day party at the, I'll call it the VFW hangar down on South River Street. They're charged to get in, but all the proceeds from it are going to be donated to the fund to help expand the Depot Museum. And so I just cite that as an example of kind of a non-city group that's here as part of the city with the Batavia Women's Club and the Batavia Historical Society, who are certainly understanding the culture and the dynamics of how this community works. And, you know, again, we're trying to do some stuff, or they're trying to do some stuff, not on the backs of the taxpayers, but on the generosity and the memories and the support of what it truly means to many people for the community to have the history we have, and to support that and sustain that history in the grand fashion that we do. Again, I'm out and around in the region quite a bit, and I've been repeatedly told by a number of my peers, as they've heard about stuff in Batavia, that, you know, we have one of the best community histories, seriously, of any city around here. I mean, the things that have happened here, the people that have come out of here, the events that have taken place that somehow circle back and have a Batavia beginning, including the fact that in this room where we sit was the room in which the United States Government, in cooperation with Dunbar Capel, who then occupied this building, invented and manufactured the fuel line which was used in the rocket that landed on the moon in 1969. And that happened right here in this room. And so I just cite that as an example of the glorious and significant national history that Batavia has. And we should be very, very proud of it, and again, support events like we have coming this week by the Batavia Women's Club in support of the Historical Society. So, thank you all, and I appreciate the council's interest and concern in this, and hopefully all of you in your seven wards that you represent may find a citizen or two that really gets caught up in this and wants to help out. I think now you all know where you can kind of, what directions you can point them. Again, we have some sign-up sheets over there on the staff table. If anybody knows somebody that would like to volunteer, pretty simple how to fill the form out and get it back to us, and we'll put them in the hands of those who you've just heard from, and hopefully we'll generate a little support thing. All these groups can use a few extra hands, and it's all volunteer, and it's not being funded by the taxpayer, and I think it just speaks to really at the bottom line what life in Batavia is truly all about, and the careful and caring traditions that exist here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And how about a round of applause for all of our organizations and all the volunteers? Thank you. Okay, then we're gonna go on with the rest of the agenda, and the next item is item number six, which is the presentation from the Batavia Environmental Commission on their 2018 goals.
Hello there. I'm Anna Baker, and we're not here to volunteer, but if you ever want to come volunteer, feel free to send people our way because we love help. So, I am speaking on behalf of the Batavia Environmental Commission. I am also on the Batavia Tree Commission. So, as we go through the goals, kind of my area I'm targeting, you will see. But we have modeled our 2018 goals after the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and they created a Greenest Region Compact. And so what we wanted to do with the Environmental Commission is go through their giant spreadsheet of ideas and target the things that we're already doing here in Batavia, because, thank you, you're doing a lot of great things for sustainability, but there's a lot more we can do. So, we put together some main areas, and we will talk about those and tell you things that we're championing for 2018. But in addition, we've got some long-term goals which we'll kind of follow up with. So the first one up is native species, and that's the area that I am spearheading. One of the biggest things, obviously, we've talked about is funding, and so we are working on getting our own funding that's coming in. I've just got some notification from the Conservation Foundation, and they are going to be helping donate some money towards the retention pond project at the high school. So that's exciting. We've got other couple things in the works that we will let you know about as they come up. We've selected some restoration sites. I'd be happy to share those with you if you'd like. One of the newest ones that I haven't shared with everyone yet is that in the next couple of years, I'm going to be working with Kane County Forest Preserves. And so, one of the spots that I'm going to be targeting is the section that is on the southwest corner of Fabian and Route 25. So if you're familiar, as you kind of come in, it's not the prettiest site. And so what I'll be doing is opening that up so the site view is a lot, you know, it's nicer looking, it's a lot safer for traffic, which is a great thing for our community, and then just kind of taking out a lot of the invasive species in there. We're also helping partner with different organizations, definitely with high school. We did Battle of the Brush Pile recently, which was a great success, and we are putting in their retention pond project with the high school students are doing. So for air quality, we want to reestablish a idling campaign. I know a lot of you probably have kids or have been in the schools, and you see those lines that go around as you wait to pick up your kids, you know, trying just to get people to maybe turn off their cars if they're waiting for a while. Also, other public education indoor air quality issues. So, this coming Monday at the library, we have rescheduled then for Batavia radon awareness. So, in this area, most basements do contend, do have radon, so just a safety thing. People can screen for that. Walkability, we want to earn the Walk Friendly Community Designation this year, and so Abby Beck, who's here with us today, I know you've probably seen her AARP video, she helped with that. I think it's a really cool PR piece for our city. So, next up is economic development. That's one we're gonna try to roll out in 2019, and just try to encourage recycling and other initiatives for our businesses in the community. We're still kind of working on some stuff. We had a plan in the past. It was kind of labor-intensive, and we just want to keep it simple and try and get people to pledge to do more. For economic, oop, I just went over that one. Let's see here. Environmental education, so we are trying to do more community outreach events. You're probably familiar with some. We do the river cleanup, but we have other, we have other things too, like just an educational walk where we have green drinks, where we met at Fermilab, go have a couple drinks afterwards. We go through the prairie, we look at the wildflowers, you know, just try and open it up to all types of people who might be interested. Let's see, that would be a great area that I would love to see some of you coming to, you know, somewhere fun. Grab a friend, grab a family member, and show up at one of those events. Waste and recycling, we have a new contract that's going to be coming up, and one of the one things we really want to look at is adding household hazardous waste pickups. So Carolyn, who is here tonight, Carolyn Burnham, is working with Scott Haynes right now, trying to finalize some of that into our next contract. Also in there too, we're looking to hopefully do like a pilot program for food scrap recycling, possibly partnering with Farmer's Market downtown and letting people bring something down there. So that's in the works, and just increasing proper education about recycling, which you've probably seen, if you follow any of our Facebook feeds, there's a lot out there trying to educate for that. And then last thing up is energy. Energy is an interesting thing here in Batavia, but one of the things we're looking for on this one is the long-term goals. Okay, so what we're hoping to do is shift 100% of the city's non-baseload power to renewable energy by 2040. We started doing some great things now here. We have a charging station out front, and then with that goes, we're hoping to get the city's vehicles, as many as possible, powered through that by 2025. So basically, what I want to ask you guys now is to find something, there was a letter that came out, and it highlights our goals, which will be posted on our Facebook site and on the city website. Take a look at those and find something that might interest you for you, that you personally are doing already or in your ward, and if you could kind of stand behind us and pledge that you will help, we'll reach out, hoping that you guys can find an area, or just come to an event. It'd be awesome. And then lastly, what we would like to do is to sign on to that Greenest Region Compact. So, it's just a pledge from us in Batavia saying, hey, we're taking these steps to try and be a more sustainable community, and by signing that, it's just saying that we're on board and we want to follow those plans. Questions, anybody?
Questions?
Where do we find where these events are?
Our events are posted on Facebook and also, are they posted on the city website? Not always. We're trying to update that, and I apologize if they are not always. There's also signs sometimes that go up in the community, like Green Night at the Movies, which was up here, but posted around town. But we're working too on a little bit more of exposure, trying to get those events out for people. We have a flyer that should be posted soon, correct, to the website with event dates? Thank you. Good question.
About the PAC?
About the what?
The PAC. Did you want to?
Yes.
Now, who signs that? How, what is that?
So, it's our city. I mean, it's basically all of you that just say, hey, we think this is a great idea. We want to make Batavia more environmentally friendly, and it's as simple as just saying, hey, we want to sign, and we want to start working on some of these projects. And so just kind of taking small steps at a time, which in our 2008 goals is, excuse me, 2018 goals is, is pretty small, and I'd say most of them are attainable. A lot of them have already been reached, which is great, so...
So have you sent that to people in the city?
We have not, no. No.
At the end of the year. At the end of the year.
At the end of the year, and we'll be following up on the things that we have achieved, just better update the community and you to let know, you know what's going on.
Will you send that to all the council members?
Yes. Yep, there was, the goals were already sent out, just the brief goals on everything. So that should be available to you already.
And how do you want us to stand behind one of them? How do we just select it per?
We just want you to say, we think this is great, and we'd love to sign the compact. So you just say, we want to, as the city of Batavia, we want to sign the Greenest Region Compact.
Done.
Beautiful. We got one for all. Any others? Hands, hands, you can show a non-committal sign of support.
Mayor?
As, I'm one of the former chairman of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and I'm on the executive board. I think maybe in an earlier version of this, we maybe have, there's stages of this, as I remember, and I think we've already, we're climbing the ladder, but we're maybe not at the greenest we can be, but we're...
We have a lot checked out. You'd be surprised. We went through, and we're like, this is great. We went with, we met with a lot of people in the community that are working with our city government, and they went through, and we're like, yep, we're doing this, we're doing this. So we added a small list to add, but I think we're doing a great job. So thank you. I mean, that's a compliment to you and the people in our community that are working towards these things. I think that's great.
I just sat in on a briefing about this on Monday morning over in Oak Brook, and I know we are fairly high up on the ladder, and there's just a few more things that we need to do, and if the Environmental Commission can point out to us what we need to do still, I certainly have the connections with the staff in there that we could, I think, attain this for Batavia relatively quick.
Yeah, I think so too. I mean, it's as simple as us just saying, hey, we love this idea. Let's get on board.
We need to have the council, as she's indicated, pass a resolution of support and commitment that we're going to do this, but most of it is pretty good stuff. And so I appreciate the fact that, you know, and by having this rating, it certainly then puts us in a good standing if we are applying for grants and other opportunities for various things that are offered up, because we've committed ourselves to this. So, you know, if you want to get us what you think we still need to do, I would be...
We would love to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
What do you, what do you have to do to be, you got on your, one of the items here is the walkability, earn the Batavia walkability, walk-friendly community designation. What do you have to do to?
I'm gonna invite Abby Beck up here to finish that.
Okay.
Do you mind, Abby? She's championing that one, so I think it'd be nice coming from her. Yes.
Before Abby, can you tell us when your meetings are, and they're open to the public?
Oh, yes. We would love for every one of you to come to our meetings. Just feel free, they're the first, first, second, excuse me, second Wednesday of every month, 7:00, right here in the council chambers, is that what it's called? Alderman's Room. But yes, feel free to come. It's open to the public. We love volunteers. We love community members. Even just one time here or there, if you have questions, feel free to shoot us a personal email too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I answer your question quickly? It's a lot like the bike-friendly designation that the Bike Commission has applied for and gotten the bronze level for. It's like a many, many-page application through walkfriendly.org, and similar to the bike designation, we'd get a sign, we'd get that, street cred, literally. So it's something that we are going to be looking for. The next round of applications is due in the mid-June, I believe, this year, so...
Do you need help from the council for that?
Probably, yes. And we are at the very beginning stages of filling out that application, so we'll be sending around a lot of questions to city staff probably, and to the council to get all of our ducks in a row and all of our city information.
I think council will be behind that. I mean, we've done three streetscapes to encourage, you know, pedestrianism, and so let us know what we can do.
Wonderful. I will. Any other questions?
All right. Well, thank you very much. Obviously, we support the Environmental Commission. We think what you do is very important for our community, so, thank you. Okay, item number seven, Resolution 18-29R, authorizing execution of the contract with Copen Haver Construction Incorporated for Area 3 Stormwater Separation Phase 1. City Services, Alderman Wolf. Thank you. Waiting for that to load here. This would be, let's see, Task Order 17. Is yours gonna load any faster than mine? It's really slow right now.
Yeah, I was gonna put up the agenda, but we don't need to do that.
As part of our efforts to alleviate the repeated drainage concerns and sewer backups in Area 3, the combined city sewer on the west side, we allocated funds last year, no, two years ago, to improve this area. Engineering Division sent out requests for proposals for Phase 1, and now we are about to do a project in it. Gary?
Thank you. So this is Area 3, Southwest Side, separation of the sanitary and storm sewers. We're gonna discuss Resolutions 1829 and 1830 together here. 1829 would authorize the execution of the construction contract of Copen Haver Construction. We did have a bid opening, and we presented the bid, bid opening results in council's packet. As you can see, the project came in about $150,000 lower than the engineer's estimate, and the engineer's estimate was basically number three there. There's two people below us and then several above. So we got really good and competitive bids. We got a number of different bidders. We have checked Copen Haver's recent references, and we are recommending... We have checked Copenhagen's recent references and we are recommending to award to them. The memo indicates, and I believe it's been our past practice, that with projects of this scope, we're recommending a 10% contingency to just award that. And then, so that would actually be the award value of $1,521,971.76. So staff is recommending Resolution 1829.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Well, this is, for me, it's what we've been talking about for years now. And it's an important thing to do because of quality of life for people in the third ward. The gentleman who comes in a great deal of the time, you know, having, you know, storm, I mean, sanitary waste flow up in his basement. And also a second benefit from this would be, you know, less stress on our wastewater utility. And so it's, for me, it's a slam dunk. It's something we should be doing.
Other major components of this include reconstruction of the water mains in the residential areas there. As we're going through, there are a number of old lead services in this area of town. Plus, when you're installing large diameter storm sewer down the center of the street, it just makes sense to do the other underground infrastructure at the same time. And ultimately, we'll go back in and then resurface these streets too.
Well, Mike, I agree with you. I mean, this is something that we made the commitment to those residents too when they had flooding issues and I'm glad to see that the council stood behind that commitment. And moving forward with it, it's long overdue. I think, when was it, Gary, back in 2000 and?
This big storm?
Yeah, no, 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 a long time ago when we actually did the first cost estimate on what it was going to cost.
Oh, 2008.
2008.
Trotter's study that was the first look at Areas 1, 2, and 3. That's why we call them Areas 1, 2, and 3. That was over $8 million, I believe, was the estimate.
And at that time, the city thought it was important to do, but we just didn't see where we could come up with the funds and then it kind of got brushed off to the side because there's always something more important that comes up. But this time, we took it seriously and we figured out a way to get it done. So I'm glad to see it go forward.
Council authorized the city to issue bonds and so now we're using those bond funds for both this project and then Area, Award 1 project, which will come to you in a few more weeks.
Any other questions, comments? Someone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We recommend city council passage of Resolution 18-29-R, authorizing execution of the contract with Copenhagen Construction for the Area 3 Storm Sewer Separation Phase 1 in the amount not to exceed $1,521,971.76.
Second. $971.76.
$971. I don't have a 1 on my thing.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Callahan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, let's talk about it.
Yeah, let's talk about it because that's one I think is important that we make sure everybody knows that this is another big step in trying to solve that.
Okay, item eight, Resolution 18-30-R, Alderman Wolf.
That would be authorizing execution of a task order for $69,722.51 with WBK Engineering, for engineering on this.
Later on the agenda, we'll talk about, just how we put these on the agenda. Later on the agenda, we'll talk about the process for selection and our shortlist. But in essence, these were engineering consultants from our shortlist. Following the criteria we've been using for several years now. Engineering staff ranks them based on qualifications as well as cost and then develops a composite ranking. And then that composite ranking is what's used to make the recommendation. So we have worked with WBK on a number of projects now. We are confident in their abilities and they've done a good job for us, so as Alderman Wolf just said, we are recommending them. So we're recommending Resolution 18-30 for $69,722.51.
And the ranking system, I think, to me, has worked pretty well the last couple of years. I think it's gotten the best value and I think engineering and public works have both been happy with what they got out of that.
We'll talk a little bit too about why we have to, why we have to use that ranking system. That'll come up in a later.
To justify what we're doing. Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments? Care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Callahan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You want to leave that on the agenda too?
And you're here to put that on consent and talk about the actual construction.
Item number nine, Resolution 18-33-R, intergovernmental agreement with College of DuPage to conduct firefighter applicant testing. City Services, Alderman Wolf.
Right, this we do, seems like we do this every year.
Two years.
Every two years, we set up a deal with College of DuPage to do the testing that we need to do. You can explain more about it, chief. Thank you.
It's a requirement by law that I have a new test every two years. COD provides us with that test. They take care of all the testing equipment, notifying the applicants, advertising and and everything else like that. And it's an agreement that I have to enter into.
And then this does provide us with a list of people that pass that.
It does.
That's a wonderful facility too, that they have over there.
Very nice.
Anybody have any questions? Care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meitzler, second by Uer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Consent, sure. Item number 10, Resolution 18-31-R, authorizing approval of the city of Batavia federal QBs policy. Who's got this? Gary's got this? I don't know what committee it comes out of. City Services, Alderman Wolf.
Gary, you can go ahead.
I just said a moment ago about how we're selecting our engineering consultants and so just a little background. The city for years now has used a qualification-based selection process. But in November of 2017, IDOT basically made things a little more formal and then required all of us and requires all of us who want to use federal funding for any projects to formally pass this policy for qualifications-based selection criteria. And if we wanted to develop our own criteria, we could certainly do that. Then that criteria would have to go through IDOT for their review and comment. And it would have to become essentially a customized policy that would be approved by IDOT. So in order to kind of skip that step and knowing that we really follow the procedures that are outlined in here anyways, we are recommending approval of IDOT's boilerplate policy, if you will. And that's obviously their recommendation is for communities to accept their version, which has also in turn been accepted by the federal government. So Resolution 1831 basically adopts the policy for qualifications-based selection and follows, in essence, the same procedures we followed before and I kind of touched on those briefly. You select consultants based on their team members, based on the qualifications of the firm, based on the firm's experience, based on specific project understanding, based on, ultimately based on cost. That comes into the picture in different spots in the process depending on the type of project. But there's qualifications heavily influences who you make the recommendation to. And at the local level, we can use cost as a higher factor. On federal projects, you don't use cost at all. You select a consultant purely based on qualifications and then you negotiate a cost afterwards. So we're recommending 1831 to adopt the QBs policy, which mirrors IDOT's recommended policy.
Anybody have any comments?
So this policy, Gary, is this strictly for like federally funded projects and state-funded projects?
MFT, I mean, so it's really anything we have outside funding for that comes through the state and federal. If we, we technically would not have to follow qualifications-based selection policy, this formal policy for a city-funded project. But there is still the, I can't remember the name of it. There's an Architectural Engineers and Surveyors Act in the state law that is very similar to this, that you still have to select your professionals based on qualifications following the state law. So that would be for a city-funded project. And it's just easier, obviously, to have one policy and do that for all of our projects.
So you think if we wrote our own, we could put in, that we would remove the prevailing wage part of it?
Probably not.
Sneak that through? Couldn't try that? Okay. I tried.
Do it, you just wouldn't get any funding.
Right. Yeah, and that is the alternative, correct. We could decide not to do this at all. And then you, the federal government can choose not to fund projects.
Okay. Someone care to make a motion on Resolution 18-31-R?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Callahan, second by Rosoto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consent?
Sure.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Item number 11, Resolution 18-32-R, authorize approval of Phase 3 Construction Engineering Specialist Shortlist for fiscal year 18 to fiscal year 22, Alderman Wolf.
Thank you. I'll let Gary have this one.
So this is for Phase 3 Construction. So these are construction engineers. These are the people where the design's already been finished and they'll go out there and oversee our construction project on our behalf if we're not overseeing their project ourselves. Following the QBs policy, we solicited, publicly solicited qualifications from engineering firms. And on the memo, you see that 24 firms actually replied to our solicitation. And if you look at that list, I'm pleased in that many of those firms are firms we've never, never had here. So there's a wide variety of people that we've certainly worked with, but also a wide variety of people we've never worked with. So I think it really gave a a good field from which to choose from. It wasn't necessarily always just the same people over and over again. Our staff reviewed the 24 firms and then, again, scoring them, basically narrowed them down into a shortlist of six people and that's on the second page of the memo and I can go through those very quickly. Baxter and Woodman, Trotter and Associates, Ballinger Lock and Associates, V3, HR Green, and WBK. And then we're also recommending that if a different consultant is selected for design, because remember, this shortlist is only for the construction, if a different consultant is selected for design, that they would then become the seventh consultant under consideration for for construction. So we're recommending a Resolution 18-32 for adopting this shortlist of consultants for fiscal years 18 to fiscal year 2022.
Does anybody have any questions, Mike?
So I'm looking on here, Gary. You probably know what I'm going to say. I mean, I see some firms on here and I've worked with a number of these firms, but there are some firms on here that I think highly of that are not on the shortlist. So are you saying under construction, we'll never use these firms again?
I'm saying that we're recommending that for the next four years here, 18, 19, 20, 22, sorry, five years, that these be the firms that we consider first. Now, again, those firms that you just mentioned might end up being chosen for the design, in which case then they could then be selected for the construction. Firms were selected based on, again, their firm's experience, their call, their team of people and their qualifications of working on projects similar to those projects which we're contemplating and we kind of listed those projects on here. So I mean, the answer to your question is, we went through 24 and then we ranked them and we said, you know, yes, we've worked with this and several companies here that we've worked with aren't on this list. And yes, we've worked with them and we had good experiences with them, but when compared to these people, they just didn't, they didn't fit into the top six. So the top six were the ones that were chosen.
But I think your criteria is somewhat subjective.
It is somewhat subjective, sure. And that's why we have a full team of people overlooking it.
I mean, and I say that only because I know two of the firms here, you know, have ownership that the people live in Batavia. And so I, you know, I always like to try to shop Batavia and keep money in Batavia. And so that's why I just have some angst, I guess. So, and I know you guys worked hard on this and companies, the six you've selected are good companies, so I have no issues with them, you know. I just, I just have reservations about people who reside in Batavia, who own, who have companies, their principals in these companies, and they're kind of being shut out.
I mean, I know of at least three and I'm trying to see if not a fourth, that are all Batavia companies that aren't on our list. So I mean, it's not, the criteria was, you know, professional qualifications, experience of the team, project experience, past experience working with them. You know, it's, it's the professional qualifications-based criteria. That's how we selected people.
And I'm not, I'm not going to oppose you or anything. I've just get that out to you, okay? Let me ask you one question aside from that. What was the design firm and construction firm that did Woodland Hills Road?
Woodland Hills Road was done in-house by us.
Oh, it was in-house, okay.
Gary, how did you, why six make it to the shortlist? Why not four or 10?
It states on here, when they look at the scoring.
Every time you bid it.
Yeah, when they looked at the scoring, there was, there was, there was a noticeable kind of bump after the sixth. And so it could have been seven or it could have been five. It's, if you looked at the scoring, it suddenly was a, I shouldn't be drawing my arrow this way. So, you know, there was, there was, there was a fairly decent and noticeable drop-off to seven, eight, nine, 10. So that's why they just chose six. And it was the engineering staff that did that and felt that six was a representative, large enough sample for representative analysis than knowing that there's quite possibly a seventh, you know, from the design consultant.
So is there a reason though that you would want to get it, obviously for ease, I guess, and expediency, but but I shouldn't have said that. I should ask you why. You chose to get it narrowed down to a shortlist rather than just advertising?
Yeah, every time we go through a project, go through, this was, this was a major effort. A lot of staff time went into reading. I mean, these statements of qualifications can be anywhere between, you know, 10 pages up to 40 pages, I mean, or 50, 60 pages. I mean, we don't limit the number of number of pages in their packets. It comes down to staff time and just our ability to be able to review them. Trying to be efficient and again, time after time, it's just more efficient to have a shortlist of consultants. We're going to plan to do the same thing on the design side.
Scott?
I have a question for you. This kind of ties into what both of you are saying. And I understand the procedure and the thought going behind having this shortlist. My concern is because it's such a broad, you know, it's a large and varied amount of projects here, what would it hurt to open that up to these 24 whomever? But with that, having that select group, understanding that these are the people that we're looking hard at. But my curiosity would be, you know, if we put out to bid in the MFT street resurfacing and, you know, we only have these six included in that, I'd like to see what else is out there just to make sure that we're checking our baseline numbers. You know, I don't see why that would hurt, just to make sure we're doing our due diligence.
It's just a staff burden. I mean, to go through 20 proposals for a MFT resurfacing project, you know, we spend more time on the engineering review than we put on the actual engineering.
Sure, I got it.
It's, it's, it's just, it's a staff burden thing and I'll tell you that virtually everyone I'll look at on this list can handle a resurfacing project. And your basic level engineers coming out of college, it's one of the first things we work on. So I mean, they're fairly, to go through a large selection pool for, I'll call them the simpler projects, is just a lot of staff time spent reviewing, which probably are all qualified candidates. So but again, getting a broad overview of these types of projects and these are the consultants, taking 24 consultants and these types, and remember, it could have been, it could have been 32 consultants, it could have been 72 consultants, whoever wanted to reply to us. We didn't choose the 24 number, it was just the people who were interested. And taking all those people and the types of projects and then narrowing them down and scoring them, we ended up with six. And that's how we ended up with.
Gary, I understand that it takes a long time and I agree with you, but I think five years is a long time. You know, professional staff and organizations can change a lot in five years.
And they do, and they change.
New people can enter the market. So is there any way to maybe lessen the five years?
That's, yeah.
So you've done the work for the next couple of years. Maybe it needs to be revisited in two years.
Right, and that's, I guess I would argue against two years. Two years seems pretty quick, but I mean, that's up to you guys.
Whatever, three, I, you know.
Because we've had, we've had the situation where we've solicited consultants. Because we've had, we've had the situation where we've solicited consultants qualifications, and six months later, you know, staff turns over, because that's just what happens at professional consulting firms. And you are right. And so, and I don't know if there's anything around that short of going through this large process every single time. And even that is no guarantee that six months later, the people that you're, you're interviewing are going to be the same people.
But if you shorten the timeframe, the guarantee is, is greater.
A little bit greater, yeah. This isn't in the field, I mean, this, many other communities have a five-year horizon, but if, if council would like to lower it to three years, then, you know, staff can certainly, I'll work within that, that's fine.
I think I looked at it and saw that the fact that there was a, you know, to condense it down from twenty-four down to your top six, and the amount of time that it probably took to go through all those twenty-four.
Weeks.
Packets, that, that's why you didn't want to do it every other year, every three years, you know, five years, four years, five years. I think to me, sounds like a, a timeframe where then you're ready to do that big project again, just to get it down to this, to try to see what kind of proposals you get from those six, or seven, if you include the, the designing one.
So, Gary, question then, if we go this route, okay, just the way you're proposing right now, and a year from now, two years from now, you're putting something out for a statement of qualification, and you send it to these six firms. Um, in the meantime, staff has changed on two of them that you know of, that you don't like the changes. Would you even send it to those two, or do you send it to all six and then base your decision based on the qualifications at that time with all the firms?
So I'll, I'll kind of answer your question in a little different way. If, if the first year we select a firm and things go south, we just have all sorts of problems with that, with that firm. But we're not going to necessarily blindly send to that firm the next time just because they're the six on the list.
Okay.
But if we do send to a firm, and, and I'll use past example, we, we had a firm in town that we kind of struggled with a little bit. And, um, you know, we were hesitant to, to use them again, and they brought in a different team, and they kind of turned things around themselves. So they kind of had to prove to us that, that, that they knew they screwed up and that, and they had more focus on our community now. And I, and again, I can point to a couple of projects right out the window where that happened. So we would probably score them, you know, low based on our, like, their previous job they didn't do well on. But, but at the same time, depending on the circumstances, we may, we may not solicit from them, or we may solicit from them and, and have them demonstrate that, hey, we, we heard you, we're going to address your issues, and on this next project, we're going to do better. So there's no solid answer to your question, but I, I don't, I don't want to come out and say we're just going to blindly issue to six people every single time just because there's six on the list.
Marty, you're next.
Yeah, I, along the same lines, was the question of what if downturn in the economy, one or two of them go out of business? Or along the lines, is there going to be a, what is the review process at that point?
That goes to Lucy's question, I mean, and, and, and I'd like to think that none of these six will go out of business because they're, they're all longstanding companies in, in the business, all longer than my career, and I, I've been doing this since the early nineties, so. But yes, downturn in the economy took out some of the biggest companies in America.
Right.
And at that point in time, just like we said in two thousand and eight, the world changed. So, you know, we would have to, have to change. Go solicit qualifications again.
So to, to Lucy's point and Dave's point and Marty's point, you know, the, the, the engineering community, it's kind of a small community. Construction community throughout Chicago lands a small community, people get to know one another. And, and you have your, your, your six, uh, firms here now, and so someone in one firm, because you, you, you've seen who their team was, and so you get to know what person is very good at stormwater retention, storm, moving water. And so that person is with Firm A, and all of a sudden he says, in a year from now, I'm going to go over to Firm B, who's not on your list. That happens, so what happens then when you say, well, Firm A, you know, we're, we're looking to, you know, get some, we have an R F P out for some work, a, a project, but that person's no longer with Firm A, he's with Firm B that is not on the list.
So Firm A likely would get scored, I mean, so Firm A now has a new person in there we've never heard of before. And he or she might be the greatest engineer in the world, or they might be the worst engineer in the world. So they'll get scored, kind of, you know, they will get scored based on their qualifications. And at that point, it might be just paper qualifications, because we may not have, never have worked with him or her. So we have to look at their paper qualifications and say, hey, they have forty-five projects, and we know all those projects turned out great. Or, you know, look what, they've done one project, they've done one stormwater management project, and now they're submitting on our, on our project. So we might say, well, you know, we're going to rank them a little bit lower. So turnover is inevitable, and you, you, you won't go to a law office or an engineering firm or a surveying firm or a financial firm and not have turnover, especially, you know, in today's society. People, people do not go to Sears Roebuck like my dad did, you know, right out of college and stayed at Sears Roebuck until he retired at age sixty-five. People don't do that anymore.
Right.
So turnover is inevitable.
So you'll be testing all these firms?
Every time we have a project, they're going to have to resubmit their, 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 every time we have a project, they have to resubmit their qualifications specific to that project. And then they get evaluated specific to that, to that project.
And so I guess, I don't mean to dominate it, but just on the other, the other foot on that is, is that some of the firms who weren't in the six, not selected, they get a superstar who just happens to come in from California, and they hire them, and they say, now we're ready to go, and you don't even give them a look.
Well, again, and, and this, this list doesn't have to be forever. To, to, to Lucy's point, if, if you guys want to make it a shorter time period, you can. There, there has to be some level of efficiency. Going back to step zero every single time, we just don't have the staff resources for that. There, there's got to be some, some starting point for us.
We have to remember here is, we're going to have a lot of projects happening, especially when we commit more money to doing the things we need to do, and we have to make sure that the staff that we have can handle what we're asking them to do. So I mean, that, to me, says, if he needs five years to wait till he does this again, it's because he knows the work he's going to have to do with the staff he has maybe can't handle that anything in a shorter period of time. You know, so to me, I think that's one of the things we have to respect and we have to think about is the employees that we have, who might not be the same employees in four years. So this might be a little bit different discussion then, but we also have to think about what they have to do every day in their job.
Well.
How is it, how is it balanced out so that, like you had said, some just stand heads and vote, heads it over others just because they've got all the experience? But you've got others that don't have necessarily the experience yet. If you're always picking kind of the top people, the other ones will never get that experience to kind of roll into that next level. I think we saw that, I forget what, what it was, tree trimming or something, where it was put out there, Kramer, I think, and then somebody else threw it. Nobody had heard of them, and it was like, thanks for showing up, but we're going with the tried and true. And if we're always going with tried and true, there's a whole bunch of other choices that we could be missing out on, which I think is kind of.
That's what John's and entrepreneurs face every single day, because I'm, I'm starting my entrepreneurial company. I've got the greatest new mousetrap you've ever heard of, but because no one's ever heard of it, no one wants to try it. And, and inevitably, the Jeff Bezos's of the world break through, and suddenly they become the world's greatest genius. But I, I don't, I mean, I don't know that we can, I don't know how to solve that problem in Batavia.
I'm not saying the ones that I just threw the shingle up on the wall today.
Yeah.
I think what Mike's saying is there's some really good ones in here that maybe don't necess, that are just missing just an experience piece or some, a connection piece in there somehow.
Or, or, you know, our, our past experience with them, or their particular project experience, and maybe they're really good at these types of projects, or maybe they were really good at these types of projects, but those people have now retired. And there's a whole bunch of criteria that kind of goes into the big picture. And, and to your point, I mean, I don't know how to best answer your point, except to say that that's kind of a fact of, of business. It's very difficult sometimes for, um, you know, Weyerhauser, who's a, who's a, you know, lumber company, to suddenly want to get in the plumbing fixture business. I mean, people, people know, oh, they'll buy lumber from Weyerhauser, but now Weyerhauser's making sinks, they're going to say, no, I'm going to go with the Kohler sink. You know, it might be a very fine sink that they're producing, you know, they're going to go with somebody else. And I, I, it's just, it's a tough thing in all of business to break in and become and gain that more and more experience. And it's not to say that we don't hire those companies. We have hired companies that have come in, just the tree trimming guy this year, the, the, um, the one who's just finishing up their project on the stormwater side. There, if you recall, their bid was substantially lower than everybody else's bid. And we all kind of stood around here and said, hopefully he does a good job, and it's turned out that he's done a great job. So I mean, we, we do have those examples, but, yeah.
Lucy, did you have another question?
Well, I, I think I agree with what you're saying, um, that it's a lot of work for staff. But if we, again, shorten the time period to three years, I mean, I, I don't think Gary was stuck on five years. I think he just threw out a number. I mean, not, I won't say.
Well, five years is a typical range that our communities have used.
A range or a number?
No, five years is a typical number, I guess, or, I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm saying to, and I understand and I hear what council is saying. So if council wants to go to a shorter time period, I would just ask, don't make me do this every year, don't make me do this every couple of years. I need some time period to be able to, to, to work for these people.
Dan?
Do you reserve the right to press the reset button if you determine that your top six is no longer your top six?
Sure, if we, if we, we want to eventually come back to you and say, hey, these top six are not working out. We've done three projects now, or four projects now, and we've just had disastrous situations, timeout, we got to readvertise.
Based on that, I would, I would trust your judgment, and Mike, I, I do agree, I, I think we should shop Batavia as much as we can, but there's also part of me that says, we're hiring the best firm, not the best firm that's in Batavia, and it's our job to make sure we go for the best firm.
We're supposed to, we're supposed to be taking care of the taxpayers' money and spending it the best way we can. And I think part of that is, they have to be able to make the decisions that they need to make with the groups that they have and spend it the correct way. I don't think it's our job to provide an opportunity for somebody to gain the experience, to become the best.
But no one's disputing we're doing the best, representing the peoples, we're taxed with their, we're managing their dollars, and I think we're doing that. So I guess my concern, though, Gary, to that point, is going to be, you know, you, you have your six. And you and I had a conversation a few years ago, I remember that, I was like, you know, why don't we just go with one or two firms and just have them be our engineers? And you said, no, because you got to open it up to the world wide web almost, open it up to everyone, give everyone the opportunity. So you select from different people, but you didn't limit it to six, now you limit it to six. And my concern, my concern is this, is that I think with, with the tree trimming, and I think also with the, the spraying, is that when we put it out to bid, no one bids, there's only one firm bidding it. And so people, after, they, they see that they're not on the list, well, we don't need to bid to Batavia anymore because they're not going to use us anyway. And now we're just kind of limiting our, our, our resources or our, our access to, 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 to quality firms.
And we did, what we, our counter to that is that we did open it to the world, and twenty-four firms responded, and twenty-four firms submitted their qualifications, and it could have been forty-two firms who submitted it. We took anyone and everyone who wanted to submit their qualifications.
I understand, but then now you're closing the door, you opened it, now you're kind of closing.
We're just shortlisting it so that we can, we can manage our workload on, on a, on a set timeframe.
And I understand what you're saying, I just.
And then when that timeframe expires, we'll, we'll be back before you again, hopefully with a list of another twenty-four, thirty-six, or twelve, or forty-two consultants who submit the next time.
Mike?
Yeah, the eighteen firms that didn't make the shortlist, do they know they didn't make the shortlist?
That's part of this process, and, and yes, their, their correspondence that goes out from engineering.
So then they would not bid on any Batavia jobs for five years?
Construction.
This is just construction, and so we would solicit qualifications from the shortlist consultants for the next time period, whatever that is, um, for our Phase Three construction projects. Those same firms, I'll just pick one here, the first one on the list, Four H D, may be submitting their qualifications again for a design project, and then they may be the firm we use on the design project. So it's not that they're gone out of Batavia for the next five years, it's just that they're gone on, out of Phase Three construction.
Okay.
So Gary, let me ask you a question away from that, just someone who designs it during Phase One, right, then you come to the construction. A lot of times, it's just the same firm following it through Phase One, Two, and Three, and they have their resident engineer kind of overseeing it. Is there conflicts when you, you switch like that?
Uh, there are two schools of thought. There's the school of thought which says, we're designing this, and, you know, I'll work that out in the field. You know, I don't know really quite the answer yet, I mean, I was a designer, I did, I'm, I, I've, I'll take two seconds. My resume is, was, was fifty percent design, fifty percent constructor. I really made sure early in my career, I spent a lot of time behind the drafting board, and then in the summer, I kept my boots and stuff dirty. So as a designer, you know, I knew that I had this project, and, you know, I do what everyone else did. I said, well, that one's a little tricky right now, I'm going to work that one out in the field, because sometimes you need to physically be in the field to work something out. Okay? So there's an advantage there to have the designer suddenly become the constructor. On the other hand, sometimes the constructor, and we saw it on one of our projects out here, the constructor, um, either inherits a really good set of plans and everything goes perfectly smooth, or a constructor inherits a set of plans and they say, this is not going to work, we need to draw our, just to call an audible and go in a different direction. So there's, there's benefits to having different eyes look at the set of plans, because when you get lost in the forest of trees, you might think, this is the path, this is the path, this is the path, and suddenly the real world hits, and you, you've, I mean, the constructor then says, no, we need to go in this way. So there's two ways of looking at it, um, I think there's merit to both ways. And that's why we're, we're going to allow the designer to then still be soliciting for the construction, because there is a lot of merit to that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, so I think we need to make a decision here, do we want to recommend this to council as it is? Do we want to change the number? Do we want to change the timeframe on it? I mean, those, I think, are the questions we probably should answer here and now, and then move on. Does anybody want to, yes?
Well, I'd, I'd like, I'd make the motion with amending it to be three years, I like Lucy's idea. I think it, it's, you know, not every year, just, but every, I think three years is a better number, uh, because things can change back, especially nowadays, things can change so much.
Leave it at the six? I mean, that's.
Yeah, I, I think, that six should still give us a good enough cross-section of what's out there to keep it real, you know, as far as the numbers go. And I also think it gives us the ability to draw from a really good group of firms.
And we have confidence in, in you, Gary.
Right. Our staff has to be able to work with who they have to work with. Is three years?
Reasonable.
You can be ready to go again in three years? Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure.
We'll do it around the same time, because the holidays proved to be a good time to view this.
I don't want to hear retirement in two years from now, so.
Me? Not unless I'm in the law.
So Scott, second.
Okay, so Scott's motion was to change the timeframe down to three, leave it at six firms, and then, uh, seconded by Callahan. So we have a motion and a second.
Take a roll call, or?
We'll do roll call this time, we haven't done roll call yet tonight.
Saladi?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Seron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atac?
Aye.
Stark absent. Chanset?
Aye.
And Wolf?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Regular or consent agenda?
What's that?
Regular or consent agenda?
I think we've talked enough about it.
Yeah, it is.
Consent agenda, it is.
We'll just confuse.
All right, so the next item is the discussion on the strategic plan review for mission values, vision, SWOT analysis, and major topics. Before you start with this, Lucy or Laura, whoever's going to take it, I want to ask how long you think it's going to take, because we do have these other four options under the consent agenda.
I was going to suggest.
I'm sorry?
I was going to suggest we postpone it again, and I hate to do that, but we were pretty burnt out at this, uh, time, the last time we addressed it, and it seems like it's something you really need to go at fresh.
Well, I mean, what, what do we, what everybody wants, I mean, that, that's where I was going with this.
That's my, I know, and I.
Going to, depending on how long we think executive session is going to take, I don't want to have to cut executive session short, because obviously those are things that have to be done, and I'm really trying to hold these meetings to ten o'clock now.
Can I make a suggestion, we put this at the first of a meeting instead of, it's always getting put at the last and it's getting cut?
I agree with that, it's just that the, the, like, for instance, tonight, if we had done that tonight, it would have been a, a bunch of members of the public
Right.
who had to sit through the strategic planning when that's not what they were here for.
I think we realize, Laura obviously realizes how important this is to have this conversation, and, you know, she again contacted me about the, um, branding and said, you know, looking at the agenda again, I think we need to shove it, so I agreed. So I think we need to shove this and try to get it on the next one, but if we've got such a full agenda with things that we're trying to get through with staff's time and everything, we need to consider it at that time.
Sounds good, I, I actually, I think that the March twentieth meeting, um, looks fairly light at this time since the, uh, branding, um, due to scheduling, we're not able to bring that back until the twenty-seventh, so it should fit on the twentieth agenda.
Okay, so we should shove it instead of talking about shoving it? Program, as well as street resurfacing, you can go to the city website, and there, on the bottom of the screen, you can click on Maps, and one of the maps that's available are construction projects, and it shows you which streets in our town are affected by those projects. The Streets Crew is still doing general winter time cleanup activities, storm structure repairs, and storm sewer catch base and cleaning, in the Water Department, they're looking at fire hydrant repairs, and also, uh, finalization on the well number six and, and eight project specifications, and Electric has ongoing engineering for their cap, capital projects, and also the Colonial Village overhead improvements. Um, does anybody have any questions about other projects? Yes?
Do we know where, uh, Metronet is in their, their build-out that they're working on, and when do they plan to go back and do some of the restoration work for stuff that got done during the winter, where they didn't do any restoration, I've had several people contact me about that.
Um, so, in answer to your question, I believe that right now, Metronet is doing installations in, on the east side of Batavia, they are, seem to be moving from the northeast part of residential, um, southward, on the east side of town, as for restorations, um, they attempt to do restoration in the same week in which they're doing construction, if any resident is, uh, dissatisfied with the restoration that has been done at this point, they're encouraged to call, uh, Metronet and let them know, and if they don't receive a satisfactory response from Metronet, then to contact us, because, um, Metronet has assured us that with regard to restoration, they realize that this work is being done in the yards of those that they hope will be their future customers, and so it is not their intent to make a bad impression.
And, from what I've seen, just from what I've been out walking and seen what's been done, when they do the restoration, it looks like it's fine, I mean, it looked like they've done a really nice job putting stuff back where it was supposed to be, and, you know, not disturbing other spots, but then there's also some that are just wide open, that haven't been touched yet, so those are the ones that I've got the questions about, so, I'll make sure that they know that, do we have a number on the website anywhere that shows a number of contact web, or...
If you just go to our website, and you type in Metronet on the search...
Right, it'll come up.
It'll bring you to the Metronet page, and then the Metronet page has the one in your number, and I don't know that, and...
Okay, great, as long as it's on the website...
And I believe it's also a story under the announcements on the first page, too.
I'll direct people there, then.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Hey Laura?
Yes?
Uh, the, the, the owner of the property, Brianna's Pancake House?
Yes.
You know, the roof behind the building, part of that facade got blown off a while back, are they ever gonna fix it, and, and, you know, the, the promenade in front of that whole structure, it's, it's just kind of falling apart, you know, it's, it's, it's fallen, it looks like it's in disrepair, you know, how, how did, like, that whole facade on the backside, how did that come to be, it's...
I can address that, um, there was some engineering, that, that part of the screening structure was put up initially without a permit, and so we were going back and having them fix that, uh, they had to do an engineering report on that to make sure that it was actually structurally sound, so, uh, they did remediation work on that to fix that, um, so they have not, you know, finished that work a hundred percent, because, you know, some of it's not painted and everything else, um, same thing goes for the other facade as well, um, they're gonna be coming back with a, uh, COA to the Historic Preservation Commission to make some changes to the rest of the building facade, so it's not finished, you can kind of see where the line of paint is, uh, but their intention is to come back with another COA to amend that part, so, um, we ran out of season, frankly, with what they were doing there, so that's, that's kind of why it's kind of left the way it is.
So it is, you know, coming spring, they should be addressing that?
It will be addressed, yes.
And I also say that we're holding back dispersing loans...
Use the mic, please.
You recall that there was a, a loan, as well as a grant on that program, and we're holding back dispersing any of the loan amounts until the, the project is not only completely permitted, permitted, but also completed, so although he's generated significant costs that he can prove up, uh, we're not dispersing loans till that, till that's squared away.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, good, all right, let's go on to others?
Wait, was that, oh, others, okay.
Anybody have another?
Yeah, um, I was not at the last committee of the whole meeting, um, and at the end of the meeting, I did listen to it, Dave, you brought up addressing Streetscape on Batavia Avenue, and then the conversation went in some other direction, and it seemed like it was dismissed, and I'm wondering if we can, at some point, get back to discussing that, 'cause I didn't understand what happened in that conversation, and I think it is an important, um, well, important for us to at least plan that, so we're ready when TIF funds are available, 'cause time keeps flying by, it goes by faster than we realize, and it, you know, TIF is short now, but we're, we're gonna, or it will be, but we're gonna have it, you know, once, um, when North Washington starts leasing, we're gonna start replacing the TIF.
Well, I would suggest, then, the reason why you got adopted, because I only...
All right, well, maybe, we, we have looked at different, a different TIF?
Yes.
Even if they're indifferent, they can share between them, but the problem is, is the TIF that's gonna come back in from the one North Washington, is gonna be eaten up by the one North Washington project.
Yes.
It's not gonna be available for anything else.
Right, ever.
But...
In, in the event that the bonds are able to be, um, paid off earlier, because the increment is higher than expected, then there would be those funds, however, um, those funds would likely be used to defray the, um, property acquisition costs that the city had to front at the beginning of the project.
Here's what I would suggest, Lucy, if you want to ask another alderman to join you, and ask on staff to prepare a conversation about the planning of the Streetscape of Area Four, I think it was, Batavia Avenue, at some date meeting in the future, let's obviously get through the strategic planning and the branding before we have that conversation, and I would support that conversation happening, because even though we just had the conversation that there is no TIF, and you gotta do all this, and you gotta do all that, twelve years ago, I think it was, eight years ago, when did we start the conversation on Streetscape?
About nine years ago.
Nine years ago, we were told there's no money, and now it's done, so...
And we've done three of them.
The conversation's worthwhile.
We also discussed different ways of paying for, paying for these things within the TIF at some point, so, anyway, I would, um, like to, um, ask an alderman to join me with what you said.
I will join you.
Okay.
I think it's important to continue that, I mean, the three we've done have been successful, and, and I think the majority of us would, would be behind that also.
And we're looking at ways to improve walkability along there, and if we're spending funds doing that, it seems like it should be part of the TIF, or at least, I mean, the Streetscape, all in one big plan, at least.
Okay, anybody else on others? Nope, how about, uh...
Dave, just real quick.
Marty?
Um, I just wanna rec, have Jim recognized, do you wanna say a couple words about Jim? Leeburg.
Oh, yeah, we, uh, we've been notified that, uh, we lost a...
Mayor, use the mic, please.
We got notified yesterday that we lost a, a longtime member of the Batavia Fire Department, paid on call force, I think he had thirty-two years on, Jim Leeburg, uh, he had retired and moved from Batavia down to Tennessee, and over the weekend, he had some kind of a serious internal bleeding situation, and he passed away, and, uh, I know we've been trying to chase it down today, if there's any arrangements yet, last I knew, they hadn't made any, I know they've, it's gonna be out at Conley Funeral Home, and, uh, Reverend, retired pastor of the Emanuel Lutheran Church, Reverend Widler, I'm told, is going to be the person that's going to do the service when they have it, but I guess they don't know yet, probably getting the body released, or whatever's going on there may take a few days, so I'm thinking it's probably sometime next week, and I know the Fire Department is planning to do something at, at the time of this, whatever it's going to be, a memorial, or funeral, or whatever it's going to be, but he was a longtime member of the Batavia Fire Department, paid on call, and he was an avid, uh, fan of the Batavia High School Music Program, of which he was a, an alumnus, and he had a Facebook page that I think some of us looked at, and one of the highlights of the Facebook page was various things involving the Batavia Music Program, that he would, uh, probably show on his Facebook page for everybody to see, and, while he moved away, he was also one of the most, almost a daily commentator on the various social media sites with his opinions, and he had a lot of opinions about various things, but we certainly were sorry to hear of his passing, and certainly acknowledge his many contributions to the community, as a member of the Fire Department, and is also as a citizen, and certainly a lover of the Batavia High School Music Program, so...
So I know that, I know that he was close to you over the years, and, um, that's why I wanted you to kind of speak first about him, but I've gotten to know him really good, uh, the past several years, and his public persona on, you know, Facebook and around, but, um, he was a very good, quiet mentor, too, behind the scenes, and he was a really good man.
Right, so, thank you for bringing that up, we, we need to acknowledge, I was gonna do it at the council meeting, but we can do it here, too, so, thank you.
Okay, thanks, anybody else on others?
All right, then we need a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of setting the price of land for sale, and then setting the, and in the central area of town, setting the price for land for sale in the east area of town, report on the Tomley Building RFP,